Management discussion and analysis, and that's where some of the points that I'll be bringing up are highlighted. The good news is, is that what's called our net position, and that is assets minus liabilities, increased by just over $4.7 million for 2013. The general fund was not as much of a contributor to that as in prior years. We had a very close revenue over expenses of roughly $22,000. So that's cutting it pretty close. But we had a, it was a tougher year for Public Works with snow plowing, and that definitely affected the budget. Long-term debt increased in 2013 by $1,207,000. And our allowable debt for the city is $78.2 million, but our actual debt outstanding is just above $49 million. And a quick summary of where that, what funds owe that debt. Our TIF districts have $7.9 million of that debt, and that debt is paid back by the tax increment that's collected within those districts, so we don't levy for that. Our landfill has $7.9 million in debt. The sewer utility, $6.2 million. Stormwater is at $4.9 million. And all else, CIP and other debt is $22.2 million. And our bond rating is still at a double A from Standard &amp; Poor's, and their definition of that, from their website, says very strong capacity to meet financial commitments. So that's a very brief summary of the audit. Again, I can, I can bring back more on that, more details if the council wishes. The other item is, I don't know if you need to handle these separately or if they're all, okay. The other item is the debt management policy, and this has been discussed in our, well, it started in our finance committee probably back in, I think, as early as October or November of last year. And we had a lot of discussion on it, and some back and forth, and, and we do have the final version that was just approved by the finance committee. And if you recall, at our meeting where we approved the capital improvement program budget, there was some reference to our increased dependence on debt to cover that program. And so because of that, and because, simply for the reason that having a debt policy is a good, good decision for, for a city, we decided we should finalize that. And some of the benefits of this policy are that it, it really helps us with the decision-making on debt. It sets parameters for issuing future debt, and it helps us to manage our current debt. It also is seen favorably with the Standard &amp; Poor's rating agencies. They, they look at that favorably. And then I think it provides more opportunity for discussion with the council when we're looking at issuing debt, because the policy requires that we, we do four tests every time we want to issue debt. And if we don't meet those four tests, that's, would be an area of concern for me. So that's the summary on that.
Do we have any questions, Jean? Councilor Sweeney?
Thank you. Jean, I apologize, I wasn't at the last finance meeting, I couldn't be there, but on this, on item number seven, on the debt policy, which, review, it says it shall be the intent. I think it ought to be more than intent to do that. The last item on, should be more than an intent. We have an intention to do it, but if we don't do it, we don't do it. And then who, does it go through the normal, through the finance committee and then for approval for my common counsel? Is that the intent?
That's a, that's a really good point, and we can, we can recraft that sentence any way you see fit to take the, the question out of that and make it more certain that we will review this policy.
Right. And then if that's the normal procedure, it goes to finance and then to common coun, that's fine, but I, being someone new, I'm not sure that that's what it says here.
Sure. We could, maybe we could set a certain month of every year, and perhaps it's right before when the capital improvement program is brought forward for approval by council. So we could say something like April of each year that it's reviewed at finance committee?
Right. Must be reviewed.
Must be reviewed. Okay.
Thank you.
Will that be acceptable as a, can we include that in a motion to change the language and ask for a motion to approve items three and four of six eleven?
Will I approve items three and four?
Second.
Okay.
Can I, can I make one? I just thought of something. Sometimes April meetings are, are a little strange when we're having council changes. So if we could make this March instead of April.
March would be more appropriate, probably, yes. Anything further, any further discussion? If not, we have a motion on the floor to approve three and four of six eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If that passes, want to?
Item seven point one, Planning Director Cirque is submitting a request from the Superior Bid to Place a Banner in Center City Park on the arch from July 7th to the 26th.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
Seven point two, Planning Director Cirque is requesting approval of MSA Professional Services as contractor for the city's CDVG Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Study for $24,300.
Motion approved. Second.
Councilor Herrick, we should speak to this.
Yeah, Jason, I just have a quick question for you. How often does this have to be done? It's not every year, though, I don't think it is.
No, it's not every year, and in fact, we're a little behind on where we need to be, and, and more or less being kind of instructed that we need to, to take care of it. Ours is probably over 10 years old. You should be doing probably every six, seven, eight years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Seven point three, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to approve the contract amendment with SEH for construction of observation work needed to complete the Phase Three capping project at the landfill for $130,000.
Motion approved.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes.
Seven point four, he is awarding the K Street Storm Sewer Repair Phase One Project to PCI Roads for $412,000 with the option to add an additive alternative in the amount of $56,000.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, motion passes.
Seven point five, he is recommending construction-related services in support of the K Street Storm Sewer Repair Project to Donahue and Associates for $41,584.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven point six, the mayor is asking this view withdrawn for further discussion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion to withdraw.
Seven point seven, Assistant Public Works Director Janigo is requesting authorization to waive bid requirements for the purchase of one 2014 John Deere 326 East Skid steer from Duluth Lawn &amp; Sport for $58,302.11.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Councilor Bender?
Yes, my question was, was there only one bidder? Was that the reason behind this?
It's, it's, it was the, the normal way we've been buying this stuff, Minnesota state bid and national joint powers. So it already has been bid on through the national joint powers bidding process and the Minnesota state bid. Duluth Lawn &amp; Sport was the, was the selected vendor for this equipment.
Okay. Just wanted to check, had to make sure.
Motion's made, oh, Councilor Sweeney?
That was one of my questions, too. And the other one is, was this product specifically geared to John Deere, or was it open in this, did we select, go into the program with only going to buy a John Deere?
Um, not necessarily. We looked at a, looked at a few different models. We have a, we have two, two machines, actually. We have a tract machine and a rubber tire machine. And the, the tract machine is a, is a Caterpillar machine. Our experience with this machine, our familiarity with this machine, is why they chose, why they chose this one, compared prices with, with a few other vendors, and what their, same thing, what the Minnesota state bid, net bid price was on those, and that's why we went the route we did.
But if somebody were to look back and they say, why do we buy a John Deere? Do we have a specific answer why we chose John Deere versus John Sweeney's product?
For, for, for the most, for the most part, in these, we try to stick with either the Caterpillars or the John Deeres, because the service and the parts are available real close.
So that's the answer?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, I may not correct that it cuts down the amount of excessive inventory we have to keep when we have all different types.
Exactly. By standardizing our fleet, that's why we order the same type of, the same type of cabin chassis trucks. We, we have one oil filter instead of eight oil filters.
Right.
And we, you know, we keep that inventory down that way. Correct.
Councilor Olson?
Jack, nothing runs like a deer.
Are there further comments or questions? If not, a motion to approve is in order?
All move.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Nothing further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Eight point one, Mayor Hagan is recommending approval of the following committee appointments: Michael Allman to the Library Board, Mike Herrick to the CDVG and RACs, and Sherri Freeman and John Vasky to the Liability Claims Committee.
Motion approved.
Motion's made and seconded. No further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved? Motion opposed? Excuse me. Motion passes.
Nine point one, Councilor Olson is requesting an update on the Wage and Classification Study, and there was a handout from Human Resource Director Kanesny with an update in front of you tonight.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded. Is there, Councilor Olson?
Um, Cam, we just have a couple of questions. Thank you for getting this out, first of all, but in reviewing this in just a short period of time tonight, everybody's got a job description questionnaire now, and that's part of the study, I'm assuming, the whole study?
That will be utilized in the study, yes, that document.
Okay, the, the whole thing, though, it's almost like an interview-type thing?
Yes, if I'm understanding you correctly.
And then with that, it says that the supervisors are to review them and make comments in their own section. What, what is the reason for the, the comments?
Well, there may not be any comments, but the supervisor will review it to determine if the employee has missed anything, if they feel that the employer, the group of employees have missed anything. If they, the supervisor thinks that something needs to be clarified, it's just an opportunity for the employee supervisor to review what they've written and add to it in, but not change anything that the employee has written.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further from anyone? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Ten point one is a resolution introduced by the Finance Department increasing the handling fee for checks returned for non-sufficient funds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Councilor Olson?
Oh, sorry.
Anyone else? Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Motion passes.
Ten point two is a resolution introduced by Councilor Bender urging the University of Wisconsin Superior to reject any and all proposals to privatize vital campus functions such as buildings and grounds maintenance work.
Motion received and filed.
Motion by Councilor Dalbec. Light is on. Motion's made and seconded by, for the discussion. Councilor Bender?
Yes, for those six people who are watching at home, I want to read this resolution. It's fairly short.
We should read it. Go ahead.
Okay. I will, I will read this. It's, whereas the University of Wisconsin Superior is considering privatizing buildings and grounds maintenance work, and whereas such a step would eliminate the job of 20 full-time workers who would be replaced by, be replaced by at, should be replaced by at lower wage or benefits with little or, we're missing a word in there, but anyway, it's the right idea. At lower wages and/or benefits with little or no job security, and whereas increasing economic inequality is a growing problem that threatens the fabric of communities across the nation, and whereas institutions of public higher education have an obligation to help solve our pressing national challenges rather than contribute to them, and whereas if UWS were to take this step, it would damage its reputation and relationship to the Twin Ports community, therefore be it resolved that the Superior City Council urges the University of Wisconsin Superior to reject any and all proposals to privatize vital campus functions such as buildings and grounds and maintenance and work, and be it further resolved that this resolution be conveyed to the UW Superior Chancellor, Dr. Renee Walker. And before voting, I believe there are people who have signed up to speak.
Are there any of the councilors who wish to speak to this? Motion to receive and file at this moment, Councilor Dalbec?
Um, I just want to say, I certainly don't want to see anyone lose their job. The point is, this does not belong in this venue. It's not illegal, what Mr. Bender has put forth. It is just not appropriate. It's not up to the city council to get involved in university, whether it be budget or, or labor issues. It's up to them to solve their own problems, and I, and I hope they do solve the problems to the betterment of everyone.
Councilor Olson?
I guess I'd like to know what the protocol here was. There was two barks at the sound of the bell, and...
Light was on on Councilor Dalbec's stand, and it wasn't on on Councilor Bender's, so I recognized the councilor with the light on.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilor Sweeney?
I also think that this is water that we should not tread on. This is not our business. Thank you.
We have two people wishing to speak to this. Oh.
I would like to speak, too.
Sure, certainly. Your, your opportunity is now.
I disagree, too. I don't think we should be putting the school and the city against each other. So I disagree, too.
We have two people who wish to, from the public, who wish to speak. Mary McCauley? Come up and turn on the light, please.
I'm Mary McCauley. I've been employed at UWS since 1989, and I am currently the Chair of the Classified Staff Senate. My concern about the outsourcing of custodial and grounds crews positions is that this action will have an effect on the city. We have 26 people altogether, and they're taxpayers, they are homeowners, they shop in our stores, and for them to lose their jobs is, it's going to diminish the amount of business that can be transacted. Now, it's, I have been informed that the companies that take over, you know, like, they've already done this at UW Marathon County, where they had eight custodians and they outsourced, they brought in 13. However, of those original eight custodians, only one was hired back at part-time, and the amount of money was less than he was making, fewer benefits, no pension. You don't raise families on minimum wage jobs, and you certainly can't help, you know, prepare for retirement on jobs that pay 950 an hour with no pensions. This is a matter that I think the city council needs to look at and to be aware that this will have an impact, because this is only the beginning of the budget cuts at UWS. There's been many years of bad decisions regarding budgets, and now we're paying the piper for this. But there are other ways that this money can be made up, and I'm hoping that we will find support from the city council. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy O'Flanagan, and I work at UWS, and I've been there 10 years, and I'm a transplant to this area. Came to this area because we wanted to be up here. I look around this room with the custodians that are here, and I'm here to fight for them, and I don't think this is a labor issue. I do think this, this is a citywide issue, and that the city should support UWS. They shouldn't cower backwards. They should listen to their constituents, and these people may lose their homes. These people make $11 to $13 an hour, and some of them are the sole providers for their families. So you do need to support UWS. UWS is the second-largest employer here in the city. What do you think's going to happen if UWS is not here? And that could very well happen, because you all know from the administration, when you had budget cuts, did the city take it, hit on the lowest-paying people, or did they spread it across the board? I want you to think about that. You do need to support these people, and you do need to keep UWS here. Thank you.
I'd like to take an opportunity to speak as well. I, I agree with the councilors who said it, don't think it's a province of our body to, to work on this issue, but I would, I am totally in sympathy with these workers, and I've spoken with a number of them, and I would encourage anyone who feels strongly about this issue to write a letter to either of our local newspapers, or to do, join some of the groups in protest that are marching or putting up signs. A group of people have come around the community, asking us to put signs in our windows, and I've personally put one in my window, because I feel strongly about this issue. But I agree with Councilor Dalbec and Sweeney and McDonald that it's not the province of this body to have a resolution for it. But if you're strongly motivated, do something to help these people, because I think it is a worthwhile fight that they're fighting. Councilor Fantasy?
I just want the record to reflect that I will be abstaining from this vote due to my employment and my involvement with this issue.
Thank you.
Can I, I want to speak, are we going to come late?
Would you like? Come up and state your name and address, please?
Joseph Brannan, 2631 East 7th Street. I worked at UWS for three years, and my dad had worked there for 31 years, you know, and we have competition. When I got hired there, I thought I was going to follow my dad's footsteps. Even though I'm 52, I was going to stay there until I beat my dad's 31 years. My dad always told me, though, because I didn't vote all the time, because it never, never works, never votes. So if you're not with us, you're against us, even if you abstain, you know, because it doesn't help us, even if I don't vote. You know, I went to school at senior high, loved it, had a letterman's jacket, thought it was great, wore it all the time, wore it out. I wore, bought a second one, because I wore the first one out. When I got hired at UWS, I was in, to make a letterman's jacket for me, with the leather and the cloth, and it'd be on the back, and facility workers on the jacket. I said, right now, I can't wear colors of the, of the UWS because of what's going on, because I don't know what is going on. Granted, did I push my boy's friends and my boy to go to school there? Because they were undecided, but I said, hey, get your generals there. You know, I pushed them. I pushed UWS. Can I do that now? No, I was neutral. I said, I can't say go to UWS or not go to UWS. So I've been not telling kids not to go there. On the 19th, I hold a grad party at my house. My neighbor asked me to have it in my garage, because it's big, and I have the big house. Gloves are off. All them students that are coming to my house, I'm going to tell them like it is. You know, so there's income coming to UWS that I'm going to think. If I lose my job, granted, am I going after my boy and his friends and his families? Yeah, if I lose my job. You know, am I going to lose my house? Probably, yes, you know, because I have no income. You know, that's, I, that's my only job, you know, and so, I mean, if, if, and a friend of mine told me, if you hurt one person, you hurt all. You're not going to hurt, UWS is going to hurt us and my fellow workers, but it's going to affect all of us, the whole community, you know, because I'm, one where I go out of my way to help everybody in the community, matters what, you know? And, but, like I said, the 19th, when they asked me to hold it at my house, I said, as long as I can speak to the, to the graduates, you know, and tell them like it is. So it's not going to hurt, it's not just going to hurt me, it's going to hurt the community and UWS. You know, and like I said, if you hurt one, you hurt them all. If you're not for us, you're against us, even if you're, you know, you're neutral, like my dad said. So, thank you.
Anyone further? Warren, Mr. Warren, Councilor Bender?
Actually, I think Councilor Olson was first.
Councilor Olson, all right. Councilor Olson.
Denise, can you hear me?
Denise?
Yes.
Can, can you hear, Councilor Olson?
Okay. I guess what I would like to bring up is, a while back, we had an issue with UWS to allow, what are they called? Small vehicle licensing?
Slow vehicles.
Slow vehicles. And the intent, and no offense, was brought to committee by Councilor Fantasy. And the reason for that was to save UWS some money on operating costs, and it was a fantastic idea. But, now, to save UWS money by privatizing, we don't even know that if it's going to private, save money. I'm in the private industry, I think everybody knows that. But the fact of the matter is, we acted on a UWS facility thing before, and when it was brought to the council, it would allow other companies, vendors, whatever, whatever the case may be, to be able to get the same vehicle, same licenses for these vehicles, whether we used them in the city for plowing, you know, another John Deere. But I, I guess I don't understand, we're, I don't, I don't believe we're sticking our nose in anybody's business, other than the fact that we may be trying to protect the people in this city to try and retain our citizens, to try and encourage our students to go to UWS, WITC, and all of a sudden, because the word labor, and it irritates the hell out of me when we make this a labor issue. Because that's all it is. That's all it is. We're getting pinpointed with labor, and I'm on the private side. And now we've got a public issue. It's politics. It's all politics. So I don't believe, Dennis, that if we were to look at supporting a group of people, that it, it could still be our business. It, you know, indirectly, it's all of our business. How many people go to UWS, pay taxes? How many instructors are there? How many custodial staff? How many of you folks own homes? I mean, that could go on and on and on, and the, the fact that the dollars that are spent that are trickled down into the community, seven times, for every dollar, the dollar is spent in your community seven times. I've said that in the private sector for years. So I would disagree with the thought that we're sticking our nose in somebody else's business, when it could very well be good for business. We have another item on the agenda tonight that was pulled for the same exact reason, in that we're looking to hire another company, because they are local, and they do the cammering of our sewers. We're being a little hypocritical here. Thank you.
Councilor Bender, do you wish to defer to Councilor Fantasy?
I, I, I think so. I'm, I'm ready to speak when he's done.
I just want to, a point of clarification on Councilor Olson's discussion on the ordinance that UWS supposedly brought forward for the slow-moving vehicles. Just a point of clarification, UW Superior initiated the ordinance, which is a citywide ordinance. It's no different than any other company bringing, or any other individual bringing a request for an ordinance. It wasn't just for UW Superior. So I just want to make that clarification. I was just initiated by them. Thanks.
Councilor Bender?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, if you take a close look at the resolution, the word labor is never mentioned in there. And that is the truth, even though all these people do provide labor. mentioned in there, and that is the truth, even though all these people do provide labor there, and, and they do more than yeoman's service. There was a letter to the editor, which I also passed out at the last council meeting to each one of the counselors, and, Tom, do you remember the name of the employee that wrote that?
Glenn Kayler.
Glenn Kayler, right, yep. Glenn came over to my house, shared it with me, and I suggested, "You go right to the Telegram right now, and you, you do the same thing for the New Tribune," and it did, it did appear as, I guess I'd call it a guest editorial in the Telegram, he did a very good job. And he also spoke about, as, and has been spoken about tonight too, how those employees go the extra mile. They'll do things on their own time, they will make sure that they get there on those, how many snowstorms did we have, on the many snowstorms that we had this last year, make sure that everything is cleared away. And one thing I should say for full disclosure is that both Counselor Fantasy and I are members of the Alumni Board. I graduated from UWS twice, 19, I should, probably shouldn't say what years, 1973 and 1977, and I've been on the Alumni Board for, I believe, three years, or two and a half years, anyway. And I have spoken to the chancellor about this. She called me about two months ago and wanted to talk about this one, talk about what programs were being cut as far as this, as far as the budget, and they're really looking at having to cut two and a half million over, over two years, not just one million for this year. And I did agree with her that certain of those, since nobody was studying in those, in those fields of study, that certain of those should be cut, but I also mentioned that this isn't good for the employees at UWS. And then another study that I had seen recently was talking about the, the cost differential between privatizing and continuing with the employees now, and that it would probably cost more to cut the employees that are there now and go to a private firm. So I guess that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Counselor Dennis Dalbec?
Yeah, I too graduated from UWS, I did graduate work there. But when I walk in that door, my affiliations are left on the other side of that door. I come in here, I vote what I feel is the best for the community. I have a neutral stance, I certainly do not want to see employees lose their job, but I agree with Bob, it's up to the individual counselors to get involved, not without the word counselor after their name. That's how it should be.
Is there any further comments?
I request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been requested. The motion is to receive and file, and affirmative vote will receive and file the motion, the resolution. Quick, we'll call the roll, whatever order.
Because I don't know where it should be.
Perhaps if you turn on your light when your name is called, it'd be a good idea as well.
We'll start with Counselor Olson.
No.
Fantasy?
Abstain.
Oh, that's right. Bender?
No.
Counselor Sweeney?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Mazzolio?
No.
Counselor Finsley?
Yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Yes.
Counselor Dennis Dalbec?
Yes.
Counselor Esther Dalbec?
No.
Six to four, so it is...
Six to five, six?
Five, four, one.
Five, four, four. Five.
Five, four, one.
Five, four, one, yeah.
Five, four, yeah, sorry.
Is it passing, or it doesn't pass?
Um, it's to receive and file, right?
Motion's to receive and file.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. That motion fails.
I think the motion's approved.
Motion, motion made by Counselor Bender and seconded.
Counselor Olson.
Counselor Olson. There's further discussion on the motion to approve. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Abstain.
Motion's passed. Go on to, 10.3.
10.3 is a resolution introduced by Counselor Bender, requesting the city council support National Night Out Tuesday, August 5th.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded, Counselor Bender?
Yes, could I please read this resolution also? So it's a little more wordy. And this one will sound similar to the ones that I've read the past four or five years, but, whereas, "Communities across the United States have designated August 5th, 2014, as National Night Out to celebrate community and neighborhood awareness and unity, and whereas the purpose of the National Night Out is to generate support and participate in local anti-crime efforts to strengthen neighborhood spirit and police community partnerships to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, and to send a message to criminals that neighborhoods are fighting back. Whereas various neighborhoods in the city of Superior held National Night Out functions on August 6th of last year, and some of which were attended by some city counselors, now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Superior City Council wishes to express its support for the National Night Out and the goals and purposes behind it. Be it further resolved that the city, the Superior City Council hereby expresses its support for the 30th National Night Out on August 5, 2014, and encourages the administration and the various neighborhoods throughout the city to facilitate and participate in the event by spending a night out with their neighbors." And I know for the, the events that I've attended, I attend one every year at Bartley Manor and Woodland Way, and I know the fire department has always been there, as has Gold Cross Ambulance, as has the police department, and I, I've also attended one on Faxton and, Faxton and Lamborn, right, and, and again, both the, the police department and the fire department have been there, and various other councils have attended these too, and last year, I believe there were about eight that took place in, in the city of Superior, and two of my students at UWS today, because I also work at UWS for two weeks every summer in the upward bound program, they said, "We've never, we, we don't even know what the National Night Out is, we've never been invited." And I asked, "Where do you live?" And I said, "I'll be serving hot dogs right across the street at the one at Bartley Manor. Come over there and you can hand out chips and, and soft drinks." So it's, it's a great opportunity, it's a great opportunity to see everybody who lives in that neighborhood, and see, get a chance to hear what, what things are on their mind as far as the betterment of the city.
Only to remind the counselors that also is a night of council meeting, so if we have a lot of business that night, it makes it quite difficult to get there, or any long speeches that night, delay your opportunity to be there.
So I promise, I will not have a resolution that night, and the other thing is, I already asked, is there any way we could cancel the August 5th resolution, but they say there's a public hearing set for that time, so we can't cancel it, but I tried.
Yeah, Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I just want to say, yeah, last year, that's right, we did have a council meeting, but it was, it was kind of nice because out here in the parking lot, the police were out there with children and, and adults that are involved in this part of the neighborhood, so it's, it's a great program, everybody's out there having a good time.
All in favor of this resolution? Say, those opposed, anyone opposed? If not, motion passes.
11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee, amending City Code Chapter 58, Garbage and Trash, Article 1.
Motion through. Second.
Motion made and seconded, Counselor Bender?
I'll keep it very short, but would it be possible to have a Cliff Notes version of this, just a few bullet points, Steve, and maybe, maybe that could go out with the next sewage bill, just so people will know, and basically, it's just reminding them, don't have a disordered yard, and make sure anything you put in the trash, in the trash can is inside a plastic bag. But if, if somebody could do that, and, when do the next ones go out?
We can have this on the city website.
Well...
It'd be a good place for it.
Well, when was the last time you visited the city's website?
It is there, now.
Well, besides today.
There's...
We're ready to vote.
I'm just looking to see if anyone's light's on, I can't see through everybody's hat.
I just had one question on the, the receptacles. They don't have to be, I said, I saw something here, hidden from the street, because there's nobody in my neighborhood, including myself, that have anywhere to put them but on, on the alley line. Is that going to be all right?
I, I think that, ma'am, if I speak, I'm on the committee, I think that's been addressed, because we had to make sure that was rewritten for that, for that reason, so that part was changed, and if you read further on, you'll see that, it's, it's okay.
All right, I have nothing else.
Nothing further, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Motion adjourned.
Oh, I wondered if there was any business by public, but that's okay. Why don't we stand adjourned?